We'll call our January eighteenth meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so, stand for the invocation, given it out by Alex Lissick, Creative Director at Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you so much for who you are, God. We thank you for keeping our community safe this week. Father, we thank you for all of the many blessings that you have given us. God, I'm thankful tonight for all the men and women who are here, who pledged their time to help lead and guide and push our community forward. God, it's together that we ask tonight that you would give us good, creative ideas and solutions. God, we ask that you would be the leader and the guider of all of our decision-making tonight, and, Lord, that you would be in the midst of all of these plans. Father, it's our biggest desire to lift you up and to lead this community in a way that would be honoring to you. And so, Father, it's in that spirit that we just thank you for who you are. And, God, we love you, and we're thankful for your love and the love of Jesus, and it's in your great name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor, we have no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Under item four A, consider reappointment to the Planning Commission. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, the current term of Jim Cobb for service on the Planning Commission expires this month. Members of the Planning Commission serve five-year terms and are appointed by the City Council. Mr. Cobb has indicated he would like to continue to serve if reappointed, and the Planning Department recommends for his reappointment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Four B, consider reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, we have two members whose terms expire this month, Elwood Irving and Nancy Bohannon. Both have been contacted and agreed to continue to serve if reappointed. These are for three-year terms. The Planning Department would recommend for their reappointment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Under old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-171-223, rezoning eight-thirty-five South Maple Avenue from CR Regional Commercial to CG General Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is the general location of the property would be rezoned. Here's a more detailed map, aerial view, photo with our drone, and the current zoning. This tract consists of about nineteen point eight acres. The proposed rezoning was approved by the Planning Commission, is recommended by the Planning Department, and we've had no comments since first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments from the council? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-171-224, rezoning property located on West Ninth Street and North Franklin Avenue, tax map four oh one dash D dash one point oh oh and two point oh oh, from RS ten, single-family residential to PRD, planned residential development. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is the general location of this property, more detailed location, aerial view, existing zoning, and, uh, let me look back to this. The proposed PRD development would consist of the construction of a student housing apartment complex comprising of one hundred and sixty dwelling units with a total of four hundred and twelve bedrooms. At first reading of this ordinance, additional parameters for perimeter screening and fencing and the installation of sidewalks on Franklin Avenue were established for the final PRD plan. The Planning Department would recommend that two more requirements be established by the City Council. The first, that the final PRD plan specify that all exterior lighting shall be LED and dark skies compatible, and second, that berms shall be provided along the northwest and south perimeters of the site where there's no significant elevation difference from adjoining properties, the location of which shall be determined by the Planning Department and depicted on the final PRD plan. Proposed rezoning was recommended by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Department concurs with this recommendation with the inclusion of the additional requirements.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. This item is a second and final reading and not a public hearing. Public hearing was held at the Planning Commission in November, and a public hearing was held two weeks ago here with our council. Since this council has been in office, we've held a total of one hundred and eleven formal public hearings on a multitude of issues for the city, and they all utilize the exact same process, public comments only at first reading hearing, and no comments on second and final reading. Therefore, this item will be treated just like the one hundred and eleven previous, and there will be no public comments. Now, any comments or questions from the council?
The only thing I would say is that the motion needs to include the changes that recommended at the last time and what Mr. Mills said today. I do not think they're substantial, so it wouldn't affect it, but I do think the minutes need to reflect those specific requirements.
Do we need to make an amendment? Do y'all need to ma-- I'm not gonna vote for it, but do y'all need to make an amendment, or do you, uh, to, you know, amend the thing to put the berm in the dark sky lighting?
If it's gonna be a requirement, I think it needs to be included.
So it is a requirement, so we'll entertain a motion to amend and include the dark sky lighting and the berms as noted by the Planning Director.
I like that motion.
Motion, um, second?
Second.
Motion, second, on the amended motion. Now, comments from the council? Do we need to vote on the amendment?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, so we're voting on the amendment first. All vote?
I abstain.
Four yes, one abstain.
Okay, now, comments from the council?
Carries.
Anybody have anything? Oh, go ahead.
Let me check you out.
Okay. Um, I'm, I didn't vote for this in last time, and I'm not going to vote for
this time. I think a lot of what I was going to say was in the Herald Citizen Newspaper this afternoon, you know, and it states the stuff, new stuff that's come up about oversaturation. There are a lot of apartments here in Cookeville, but the main reason that I voted against it last time, and the main reason I'm voting against it this time, is because there's a, putting so many students in an established residential neighborhood is not something I think we should be doing here in Cookeville. If it were in a commercial area, I'd be a hundred percent for it, but it's not, and because of that, I intend to vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Um, I'm probably gonna be as transparent as I know how to be in a setting like this. We have, in the three and a half years this team has served together, we've had many, um, we've had a lot of three-two votes and some four-one votes, and we've faced some, some hard issues. And I'll say to you, and I've said to these men that I serve with, sometimes on occasion, I've gone home and scratched my head and said, "I just don't understand why my colleague voted that way," and I don't understand their position on it. And I'm sure they've gone home and scratched their head and said, "I don't know why Dwight voted the way he did either." But not one time, not one time, even when we voted differently, have I ever questioned or had any doubt about these men and their integrity and their honesty and their commitment to this community. Not one time to a man has that ever entered my thinking. Not one time. And for that reason, and we have looked, and I've made a point to do a lot of the diligence on this, and I have looked at it from lots of different angles and read the emails and all the correspondence that was sent from both sides of the issue, to my knowledge, I've read all of it. But for the reason I just stated about the integrity and honesty and commitment to the community that all, I believe all these men have up here, including myself, it was particularly disturbing to me to read portion of one letter that I received, and it said this, "From the outside looking in, it would appear that there may have been promises and decisions made regarding this zoning change well before the investors purchased the property." Don't even go there. Don't even think that. Don't even pursue that. That is so far from the truth, it doesn't even resemble it whatsoever. I know these men better than that. I know this team better than that, and we're not unanimous on this decision, but I don't question anybody's honesty, integrity up here and somehow to do a deal before the public hearing was heard. And the other thing I would say to you from my heart, particularly to folks from Mount Vernon, if I really believed that this, words are powerful things, words are containers, and when you start using words like this, it's gonna destroy our neighborhood. If I really did believe that this action would destroy your neighborhood or take away your quality of life, I certainly would not support it. And I believe history will back me up on that. This is my third term on the council. The first one, it was in the mid-eighties, and we faced a lot of decisions like this. My mind goes back a number of years ago, when we're sitting here, and folks from Maple Avenue were sitting just where you are tonight. And I understand, folks, I understand, hear my heart on this, I understand that if I really believed that my property, my house, my biggest investment in life was threatened, I understand your concern. I tried to express that two weeks ago, and I think everybody is. I really do get that. I get that. But I remember some years ago when we're talking about building the, what we now call the K-Mark Shopping Center, and some good friends of mine, like I have good friends from Mount Vernon in the audience tonight, came and they said, "It's gonna destroy our neighborhood. This will happen, that will happen, our quality of life will go down." But I believe if you go back to Maple Avenue today, they will say that Armageddon did not happen. It didn't happen that way. In fact, they're shopping over there, many of them, right now. So I really do believe that you're, you'll still know your neighbors. You'll still know your neighbor's pet's name. You'll know all that. And your perceived outcome, in fact, I think, in fact, I think, just like when we built the Leslie Town Center down here, I wondered, I questioned why we're gonna build it there, it's caused everything to get better down there. So I just, you know, I hear you, you hear me. It won't destroy your neighborhood. Traffic will increase, traffic will increase regardless of what happens over there. But, uh, but when we start, and I want you to know if I believe that, that I could not support this, and I do not really appreciate the implication here that somehow the deal was made beforehand, because I know these men well enough to know that that just didn't happen. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Yes, sir. Jim, you have anything?
Good.
Larry, you have anything?
Just quickly, I'm not gonna, just Dwight said a lot, said a lot that I completely support, and I wanna thank everybody for being here. I know this has been very difficult. It's an issue that's been very polarizing, both from, because you have two diver, two divergent sides. But I do appreciate the commitment and passion that everybody has on this. Both sides feel like that they're very, that they're very right, and it makes it, makes it very difficult on our side, and I do, and I do respect the decisions of each one of my council members that they've made and how they came to this. It's okay to be upset with me. I get that. I've been here and done that for a while. Still, I'm gonna continue to vote. I'm gonna go ahead and vote for the second reading, and that's all right, because I do feel like, as time goes by, that we are, we are indeed trying to protect neighborhoods. We are indeed trying to protect neighborhoods. It just, maybe it just doesn't feel like it right now. Thank you.
This has been a difficult and emotional issue for everybody. I know each council member is voting based on what they believe is best for all citizens, and we as a council don't always agree. But we stand on our principles and integrity, voting on facts and data, considering all citizens' concerns and all aspects of any issue. We know some people are going to agree, and some are going to disagree, and will claim that we've been disrespectful and have disregarded them, some even resorting to personal attacks and misrepresentation. These claims could not be further from the truth. As I said last meeting, I take my service to our city and every vote very seriously. We were elected to represent the entire city, not just a zone, a district, or a project, and to make the best possible decision for the city as a whole on all matters. In all cases, our job is to study and examine the facts objectively and determine if the zoning request is appropriate for this piece of property. The professionals in our planning department, Mr. Mills and Mr. Ward, have studied this and recommended it to the City Planning Commission, who also studied and voted that this PRD rezoning is appropriate. I wanna thank all of them for their diligence and professional review, not just this request, but every request, every day. I've studied all aspects of this request as well. I've had many people contact me that were both for and against this request. I listened to all comments and concerns. I've introduced additional measure, measures such as sidewalks, fencing, and berms, and additional security. Obviously, traffic will be increased in the immediate area, so I've also asked the city manager and public works director to study this traffic area and determine any needed enhancements. One of the key attributes citizens want in elected officials is people with strong ethics and integrity. They also want their government to be open to citizens' participation, allowing individuals an opportunity to be a component of the democratic decision-making process. These attributes have been displayed fully on this issue. In closing, we would like to thank each of you for your encouragement in this process and your engagement. I personally will continue to work with fact-based problem-solving, with integrity and strong ethics, and for the best of all citizens of Cookeville. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring up one point on planning. I serve on the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted on this back in November, and the vote was seven to two to approve this. And these are people in the city that make up the Planning, uh, Planning Commission, that they do this voluntarily, and they look at it objectively, and there's not an agenda that they're trying to do. They're just trying to represent and do what's best for the city of Cookeville. And I'm very appreciative to serve on this commission with them, and the thought process that went into this, emotionalists, I understand people living there, it's the perception of the unknown right now, and this type of zoning and PRD can, you know, go in any residential area that we, you know, deemed that they can make, make it work. It hasn't worked to completion yet because the developer, it's a high bar to maintain or cross, and it hasn't fulfilled itself yet. But I wanna speak on behalf of the Planning Commission and the job that they do, and do it in an honest and ethical manner. I wanna thank them for the leadership and the due diligence they did in recommending this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All vote?
Four yes, one no, motion carries.
Five D, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-171-225, rezoning property located at South Willow Avenue, West Jackson Street, Poly Drive, and West Stevens Street, tax map fifty-three J dash J dash one point oh oh, from CR Regional Commercial to CG General Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is the general location, current zoning of the site, aerial photographs, some photos with our drone. If you remember, the reason for this request is about half of this property is located within a floodplain. You can see where the floodplain is located. By going to the CG zoning, they'll be able to reduce their setbacks off of Poly, which gives them approximately twenty more feet of potential building area. The rezoning was approved by the Planning Commission, recommended by the Planning Department, and we've had no comments since first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Item six, consent agenda. Six A, consider awarding bid for a hundred amp cutouts for the Electric Department, and six B, set a date, two fifteen eighteen, for a public hearing on ordinance O-18-0101, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code, Title fourteen, Chapter seven, pertaining to stormwater management guidelines for federal and state agencies. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. New business, seven A, consider Resolution R-180102, scheduling a public hearing on Resolution R-180303, calling for annexation of the Mackey Farm area by referendum and a public hearing for the Plan of Services. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, the city has received a petition from the owners of seven of nine parcels in an area designated as the Mackey Farm Area requesting annexation. When all property owners in the area have not requested annexation by state statutes, the city can only annex through referendum. A plan of services for the area petition for annexation has been prepared and was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission last October. The resolution before the council schedules a public hearing for the resolution, calling for a referendum on the annexation of territory that we've identified as the Mackey Farm Area, and for the adoption of the plan of services as prepared by the Planning Commission for the proposed annexation area. The area for which we're considering an annexation referendum is located on the eastern fringe of the current corporate limits, south of Interstate forty and east of Tintex Drive, the primary point of access to the area is from State Highway one eleven via Salem Road. It consists of nine parcels, comprises a total area of about two hundred and forty-nine acres. Resolution eighteen oh one oh two, which is, which you're considering tonight, schedules the public hearing regarding Resolution eighteen oh three oh three, which would be the resolution calling for the referendum for Monday, March fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at four P M. The resolution also specifies that the notice of the public hearing will be published on or before February eleventh, and that the property owners in the proposed annexation area will be mailed a copy of Resolution eighteen oh three oh three on February first, two thousand and eighteen. The Planning Department recommends for adoption of Resolution eighteen oh one oh two.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval to purchase one K-nine police officer. Chief Evans.
Mayor, council, as you may recall, back in December last year, I asked for approval to purchase a K-nine, and that, uh, that was approved. Subsequent to, uh, starting that process, we learned and got a recommendation from, from our veterinarian that we retire another dog that has some health issues. So what I'm asking for tonight is the purchase of a second K-nine. Initially, you approved thirteen thousand. We went back to the vendor, which is F and M K-nine, and they agreed if we purchased a second dog, then they would reduce the cost to nine thousand for that dog. So the total purchase then would be twenty-two thousand. It is budgeted, there is budgeted in the drug fund for, I think, ten thousand, so we would do a budget amendment for the remainder, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering contracts to perform professional services for utility line installation and relocation, water, sewer, and gas within TDOT's South Jefferson Avenue Road Widening Project. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor, council, I'm seeking council authorization for the city manager to enter into three engineering contracts with the CTI Consulting Engineers. These contracts will cover the water department, gas, sewer department, and the gas department. TDOT has notified us of their intent to start the South Jefferson Widening Project, and from I forty down to one eleven highway. To meet TDOT's deadline for submittals and reimbursements of the relocation of our utilities in that, in that project, it is my recommendation to hire the CTI firm, mine and Jeff's, to hire the CTI firm to expedite that process. That is gonna go from Willow, I mean, from I forty down to the one eleven interchange, and basically just, everybody knows what it's like. It's a two-lane road. It's gonna be, I think, a five-lane divided highway, so it's gonna be a pretty big project. And so, we've negotiated prices with the engineering firm. It'll be similar to the, uh, the way we did the interchange project. TDOT will reimburse on, on our engineering costs. We estimate probably seventy-plus percent of those costs, and we wanna do that to be able to then, when, include those utility relocations in their project, and then they will reimburse us those, and make sure that all that's, uh, that we benefit from those reimbursements. So it'd be my recommendation to approve this contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Attorney, may I ask, does TDOT reimburse the city in full, or do they just reserve, a percentage? How does that work?
It's percentage, it, it's gonna be, certain things are covered and some things aren't covered. Like on, a lot of our sewers outside of the, on private easements, so that'll be a hundred percent. If it's in, in their right of ways, we may get part of it reimbursed, but we may have to eat part of it, if, if we're gonna do betterment. Betterment is, if you're gonna change the line from a six-inch line to a ten-inch line or something, you may have, we may have to fund those costs.
So we really don't know the amount that the city would have paid?
This is just a start of the process, yeah, yeah. Right now, we won't know, because we haven't developed the plans yet. We've just got their plans to start that process, so we'll know, but most of it'll get reimbursed.
Will these monies be spent this calendar year, or will it be eighteen, nineteen?
It's gonna be, I think, the bid letting is scheduled for December thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. So the construction money, which we'll come back later with an agreement with TDOT, we will, uh, once those cost estimates are formed, we'll have to do an agreement with TDOT and, and place that money in, in their accounts, and then they will use any money that we may owe, and, uh, so that'll come. But this will be probably over the next, this year's budget and next year's budget will take most of this. But, but a lot of it's gonna be during the construction project, too.
So it'll be like twenty-twenty?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider approval of an amendment to agreement number one five zero one four zero, providing for the fifth interchange lighting project and a local government investment pool contract for the funding. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, you have in your packet a six-page document. The cover sheet is informing us that the Department of Transportation is now in a position to advance a construction phase of the fifth interchange lighting. The latest estimate that we got for the construction phase is one point two nine seven million dollars. And, of course, this is a fifty-fifty matching grant with TDOT. The city's portion will be six hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, the next page in your, in your packet is talking about the amendment that's required because the price has changed. We had an agreement back in two thousand and fifteen, and the price is changing from that original agreement. There's been several scope changes on the project. And then we have the signatory page. Then we have the, the exhibit for the amendment, and it's basically, uh, the construction is estimated to be one point one seven nine million. Uh, construction, engineering, and inspection is estimated to be a hundred and seventeen seven nineteen, making up the one point two nine seven million dollar project. Next thing in your packet is a contract. That's with the Department of Treasury for the state of Tennessee, and it basically allows the city to deposit that six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars into what's called an LGIP accounts, Local Government Investment Pool, and so that's what we would like to do. The Electric Department's gonna make that capital outlay and pay that money into the LGIP account, and then as, as TDOT needs money for this project, they will pull from that. And, uh, it's been a while since we've had a project, but I was, uh, glad to see that any interest that's gained on that money will be credited back into that account, and hopefully, uh, we'll do pretty good on that. But with that, I would recommend your approval of both the amendment and the contract with the Treasury Department and move this project forward.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end. If any citizens would like to address the council on non-agenda items, meaning nothing that was on the agenda tonight, we're welcome to do so. Do we have anyone that would like to do that? Yes, please come to the lectern and just step to the podium and state your name and address, and statement of no more than three minutes may be made on the, on the items.
Okay. Uh, my name is Barbara Rosenstiel, and I'm here representing the Putnam County Democratic Party. Uh, I myself do not live in Cookeville. I live out in the county. Do you still need my address?
Yes, please.
Oh, it's, uh, one oh two nine three Rabbit Ridge Road Baxter.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we're, we're here today because the Putnam County Democratic Party has drafted a resolution, and we would like to present this resolution to you and urge you to write and pass a similar resolution, but I wanted to give you some background on what it is before I give it to you. A little bit of historical background that in, you probably all know this. In the late eighteen hundreds, the imposition of poll taxes became very popular in the South. In eighteen seventy-one, Georgia initiated the poll tax, and by nineteen oh four, all the former Confederate states- 1871, Georgia initiated the poll tax, and by 1904, all the former Confederate states followed its lead. And along with other Jim Crow laws, the poll taxes were passed to disenfranchised poor African-Americans. So in Tennessee, the Tennessee State Constitution of 1870 provided for a poll tax at the discretion of the General Assembly, and in 1899, the legislature implemented the poll tax. So along with other self-described electoral reforms, this resulted in the disenfranchisement of a significant portion of African-American voters. Now, jump forward to the 1930s, 1940s, there were attempts to, you know, get rid of the poll taxes, get rid of the laws. They didn't go anywhere, but by 1953 in Tennessee, the poll taxes were removed by the 1953 Constitutional Convention. Now, nationwide, it wasn't until 1964 that the Voting Rights Act removed, you know, the poll taxes, and in 1966, a U.S. Supreme Court case independently declared poll taxes an unconstitutional violation of the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. And now you're probably wondering, why is she telling us all this? So, we think poll taxes are done, but in fact, I think many of us would be surprised to find out that poll taxes still exist in Tennessee for a certain group of people. And that certain group of people are ex-felons. Now, when ex-felons come out, they can get their right to vote restored, but the process is long. They have to get what's called a certificate of restoration application form, then they have to get their parole and probation officer or other authority to sign off on that, and to certify they've completed their sentence, their parole, their probation, and that's all well and good, but there's one more thing. They also have to certify that they have paid all of their court-ordered restitution, that it's all paid in full. And in addition, that application goes through the Election Commission in Nashville, which has to certify that they have paid all back child support. So only after that's all been done can voting rights be restored. And so, these two requirements, for court-ordered restitution to be paid in full, and all child support obligations are current, before voting rights will be restored, essentially imposes a modern-day poll tax.
I'm gonna ask you, the buzzer went off, so wrap it up in about 15 seconds, and you can, welcome to leave this information, and we can...
Okay, well, there's more than 420,000 Tennesseans are barred from voting by current law. 21% of them are African-Americans. We have a resolution that we are presenting to the city councils and also to the county commission, and we would like to, can we bring it up here?
Officer.
Ask the city council to consider passing such a resolution to give to the state legislature.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council members? You have anything? You had something? Yes, sir.
There was something I wanted to bring up that happened on January the 10th. We had a save by a combination of people from the city of Cookville resuscitating a gentleman who had a cardiac arrest, and with the new AED from the Putnam County Sheriff's Department, and it was put in the Herald Citizen. But something that's not really known is that the PulsePoint app that is, that the 9/11 board, in conjunction with the Hospital Foundation, spent some money on to purchase, is now operational. And if you have this smartphone app, you will be notified if there's a cardiac arrest that's phoned into 911 nearby, and if you're able to get to the location, or know where an AED is close to the location, it can be used to save someone's life. We were very fortunate to have a Putnam County Sheriff's Department vehicle nearby, and so the combination of doing resuscitation with CPR and then shocking the person properly, and all I know is the person is in Cookville Regional Hospital. I don't know anything else about him, but we had a good save here that was notified in the paper. But the thing I wanna bring up is that I think the 911 board and 911 services with Brandon Smith is going to be publicizing to get everyone to download PulsePoint. It's a free app, and if we can get several thousand people in Putnam County to download this app, it will be very helpful in hopefully saving someone's life, and we hope it's never used, but if it is, it can save someone's life. So I just wanted to bring that up a little bit to publicize it and get that going. Thank you.
To note that, too, I believe the first person on the scene was one of our police officers. He was off-duty, and, and another off-duty, was it?
Fireman.
Fireman, yes. And then, then, as you said, the departments, Putnam County Sheriff's Department came. Anybody else? We're adjourned.